So, sit back and relax and we're gonna get right to Feet to the Fire. Let me introduce our people on the stage right now. Feet to the Fire was my co-creator, John Canales, who's the editor of the Daily Pilot Newspaper. John came to me in 2010 with a crazy idea of doing a political talk show and having the journalists who know the candidates the best interview them. And here we are, all these years later. And, running for office, in the first seat, we have Chris Bunyan. The Mayor of Costa Mesa, Jim Righimer. Rita Louise Simpson. Al Maloney. Lee Ramos. Tony Capitelli. And, asking our tough questions tonight, we have Alicia Lopez from the Daily Pilot. And, Noberto Santana Jr. from the VoiceOfOC.org. Now, usually, one of our members tonight, Jack Wu, from the Register, isn't with us because he's on his honeymoon. Yeah, so Jack got married. We were all very surprised someone married Jack. But, as my grandma said, there's a pot of gravy in that. And, so Jack will be with us again on October 1st. Well, let's get right to it. So, Jim, we're here at OCC, which is a great campus, and the other day when I was here, someone raised the issue that you are known for being pro-development in the city, yet you're against the expansion of OCC. Are students and teachers not good for the economy? Where are you going with that?
Yeah, it wasn't as much as that as what was happening with the development. First of all, they're looking at 2,100 parking spaces across the street over at the fairgrounds. The original plan showed the 2,100 parking spaces on the property itself, so from a traffic standpoint alone, just getting all the turning movements when you have a parking structure across the street doesn't work real well. Also on this corner here, they're looking at four-story hotel, which backed right up to the College Park residence and literally looked into their backyards. I since had that meeting, met with Dennis Harkins, and we're working on making sure that we have facilities we need here at the school, but it doesn't impact the community as much. This is about 22,000 students, it's going to about 29,000 students, that's all good. Let's see if we can work together and make sure it stays on the campus and doesn't go off the campus. Remember, the city council has no vote on how they do things on state property, and the school here and the fairgrounds are state property.
Jim, what do you think about this issue?
Well, in the process, it's nice to have the city start and take notice, but the college itself had three meetings, of which two of those meetings were fairly well-attended. And, I've been assured by the Board of Trustees for the Orange Coast Colleges that, in fact, they've heard the neighborhood, they've actually heard those folks, and they're rethinking how they're going to do that. How they get that done, I'm not sure, but they have already heard it, they've made comments, and they've actually made comments to the community.
Well, during the-
Just comment there real quick, it's great they say that now, but they just filed an EIR, an impact report, which just recently showed the parking structures there, so when they say, "Well, we're gonna change it," then why'd you file those documents? That's the only issue.
And, the only thing they told me is they haven't heard anything from the city except for a response to that EIR, which is about the traffic issues, not about the density. Not about the different construction, but just about the traffic issues. Not about anybody else.
Well, while we're talking about development, John, I know that you had a question.
I do, and I wanna pose this to a lot of folks, but I wanna start with Jim. Obviously, a lot of your constituents are upset about the density in town.
Yes.
A lot of that, about what they're calling overdevelopment.
It's about density.
Hold on. And, some of the projects require variances and that sort of thing. First, why are variances being granted, and is this development good or bad for the city?
Well, a couple of things. Number one, we have never, ever put one more unit on a property than it's been zoned for, period. We've never done that. The zoning that's been in place has been in place for years. We have a person who's missing here, Katrina Foley, who voted for and put the West Side overlay plan over the whole West Side. She did that. And, that plan is just what we're doing following. Now, variances for all sorts of odd-shaped lots or issues that they have have been happening in the city for 60 years. That's nothing really new at all, it's just making sure to do it. I do believe, I mean, I do believe in private property rights, and I believe if a person has a property zoned for a fourplex, we shouldn't just go in there and say, "Well, we're gonna make it a threeplex." If it was zoned for four, they should be able to build four. But, I've said to my colleagues on the council, if you wanna downzone, just downzone.
Okay, I wanna, I just wanna be fair to everyone and kinda go down the line. Chris, where are you on the development that's going on?
Well, if we could just back up real quick to the expansion of OCC. The OCC population will be transit, meaning it's not gonna be fixed, so whether the population, student body swells during certain types of the year, that same population also goes down during the summer when school's not in session. Now, there's been some discussion about the parking structure across the street, which means you're gonna have a lot of pedestrian people crossing to and from. During the fair, if you've driven up and down Fairview, Arlington, or even Fair Drive, what happens? You're stopped because people are walking to this parking lot to get back and forth. There's been some discussion during the fair, that being utilized for faregoers, which means you'll have less people walking across the street here. And, with all due respect for Jim, I think it's extremely hypocritical for him to criticize the expansion of education when he himself has rubber-stamped almost every high-density project in the past two years that he's undertaken. And, taken money, and taken money. There's never been one city council member in the history of this city who has further expanded the high-density developments that are going on right now, in particular the Colleen extension, which is about ready to become a member of Costa Mesa.
We're gonna talk about that.
And, on the West Side as well.
Okay, let's just go down the line. Rita, where are you on development?
Well, I think that having new people in the city and new taxes is good. I think with thoughtful development, it's important that it be looked at, each project is looked at individually, and it starts with the Planning Commission. So, the Planning Commission approves it before it goes to the city council. So, if there's question, that's when it goes to the city council. So, I think that, you know, there are more heads than one looking at it, and that's important. And, I think the way they're trying to mitigate the traffic and so forth on each one, and each project is responsible for mitigation and noise, then that's, those are positive things. So, having new people in the city and expensive properties, these apartments are not inexpensive, that that's on the cultural side.
Tony wanted to jump in there.
The council had a recent opportunity with the Colleen annexation to keep the county standards for the lot size, and decided, and at one point it was gonna be a little higher than the city lot size to maintain county standards in that part of the city which had their lots, right? So, people would have more space around their houses. And, not really the last minute, but basically the last minute, the city decides to go down to the 6,000-square-foot lots, which it seemed like that was an opportunity to finally give, you know, the residents, you know, something they wanted instead of the developers, which were getting their variances. Why would the city decide not to give the residents that piece of-
So, let me, first of all, there's actually no project in front of the city council yet, and no variance has been given out to anybody. What's happened here is that a piece of property is going into the, excuse me? What's happened here is that this property is now being annexed into the city. There's two cul-de-sacs there, and there's a property that has a vacant property in the middle, kinda like where the third cul-de-sac would go, and it's not in there. The issue was with the neighbors that backed up to the property, and they came to us and they said, "The standards in Costa Mesa are that you back up too close, that you have a five-foot-"
Yeah, I'm not talking about the setback. They did give a bigger setback.
No, no, but that, because that is the issue. The issue was, the problem was, how close were they?
No, I'm talking about the slot size.
The issue, let me walk you through what actually happened. The issue was that there was five-foot and 10-foot setbacks. They said they wanted 20. We met with the developer to say, "They wanna be set back from their property." The developer came back and said, "Those houses along there, even though there's no project, will be 18 to 25 feet."
Yeah, I realize that, I'm talking about the lot size.
Understand that. So, then the distinction then is, is the difference in the size of the house somehow would make it different for that property. The two cul-de-sacs do not get affected, there's any effect, it's only the people that back-
But, you know, there's a bigger issue here though, Jim, because, you know what, I was part of the Santa Ana Heights annexation and the annexation in Newport Beach, and what you find when you deal with LAFCO is that when most places are annexed, if they have certain zoning, like we did in Santa Ana Heights with their horse property, the city adopts the zoning for that area as they annex them in. And, that's not what's happening here.
Wait, 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 let's not be truthful about it. When it, when, right next to Santa Ana Country Club, which was across from Santa Ana, there are 6,000-square-foot lots that were previously hired, that Newport Beach took in and brought them to 6,000. It's not unusual that that happens.
Well, you know, what's really interesting-
I understand, first of all, 6,000-square-foot lots is the R1 standard in our city, it's what everybody has.
Why don't we do Tony first, 'cause we haven't heard from Tony at all.
There are other candidates in this race besides Mayor.
Tony, Tony, tell us what you object here.
Regarding OCC, first of all, the difference between OCC and other types of developments, OCC adds tremendous value, public value to a community, educational value, that's the biggest difference, other than not having control over the situation. So, I'm all for the expansion of OCC. If we're really concerned about things like traffic, let's do what college kids love to do, let's add bike lanes, promote cycling, other forms of transportation, those sorts of things.
Jay, you had something to say about the development issue?
Actually, it's about, it's about development, it's really about the annexation. It's interesting to note that this developer has actually been in conversation with the city for over two years about this development that he wants on that land before the city has annexed it. He has a plan in place that requires the lots to be 6,000 square feet, as opposed to a plan in place that meets with the neighborhood circumstance of 7,200 square feet. I find it interesting to note that what our council has done is approved, it's changed from 7,200 square feet, what it is under the county, to 6,000 square feet to satisfy the needs of the developer, who said that in council, that he needed 6,000 square feet to make it work.
Well, let's change up the conversation a little bit. Noberto, why don't you take the lead on the next subject?
Well, let's talk about the 60th anniversary party. Jim, you know you've been getting a lot of, a lot of mileage here. I do think it's fair to put it to the city mayor in terms of something that by most accounts seems to have been a bit of a disaster. Hundreds of thousands of dollars over budget, poorly attended. I read the other day in the Daily Pilot that the man in charge, the person that was put on leave, again, an issue of accountability, was just paid out $170,000 by the city. As far as I know, you voted for that settlement. So, my question is, I mean, you guys, your new city council, let's say the majority, came on arguing that cities should be run like a business. You stamped CEO on the top of the city manager and called them poof CEO, and said, "We should be able to run this place with a much more network of outsourcing and, you know, be a little bit more nimble." And yet, in your first outing, you know, on that track, he went right off into the guardrail and, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars over. What I'm curious is, what's your sense of what went wrong? And, do you agree with the person who, I guess, did something wrong, Mr. Joyce, being paid out $170,000? And, why is that man being paid $170,000 if he ultimately failed and, you know, didn't follow civic procedures?
Okay, well, there's like a dozen questions there. Let's go for the basics on there. First of all, Mr. Joyce and the city council, as a 5-0 vote, voted to do the settlement. The issues that happened beyond that, the reasons why that settlement was done-
But, do you agree with that?
Do I agree with it?
You voted for it.
I would say that I'm not gonna get into a personnel issue, but in government-
So, there's no accountability?
In government, I'm telling you, to lay off, to fire a personnel, I mean, we had a police officer having sex on the job night after night after night for a month-
Wait, but we, let's go back to the Dan Joyce thing. Now, let's go back to the Dan Joyce thing.
If you can't speak to Joyce, then don't speak to him, but don't tell me about 100 other things.
I'm not gonna speak to anyone when it's a 5-0 vote to do that, because it's felt like the best-
I'm asking about the four other members, I'm asking about you, you're the one up for election.
Right, it was a 5-0 vote, all five voted for that. And, I agree that the liability the city had under that, in that contract, let's talk about what happened.
What did the city do wrong that meant that you had to pay somebody $170,000 of what some people call hush money?
What, there's nothing in the agreement that says he can't talk to anybody he wants.
Is he talking? Is he sitting down and doing interviews to people?
You can talk to anybody, can I finish?
Sure.
Here's the point. The point of it is, is that we have a system in place in the city. It takes four signatures for a check to be drawn. What I said from day one, why is it one person's being attacked and four signatures was done? Another employee who was ahead of our finance, when there's a $35,000 budget for entertainment, in one day signed off $85,000 for entertainment. That was never approved by the council, that should've never have gone through. So, the reality of it was, if it was run properly, like it was supposed to be run, the system in place wasn't run, and it didn't happen that way.
But, isn't that the problem of, in some ways, you've wanted to move the city to a faster procurement system by privatizing, by doing other things? And, again, the first one, you're talking about your own policies not followed.
No, sir, sir, the procurement system of the city was not followed, period, that's what happened. So, to go ahead and to blame a bunch of people, he was the attack dog, and they attacked him, and they went after him.
Who, Joyce?
Joyce, completely went after him, said it was all his problem, as if he had, was the only one that was there. Four signatures signed on that.
So, you think basically he was unfairly maligned, and it's fair to pay him $170,000?
I'm not gonna get into that issue either way.
Jay!
Jay, you were on that committee as well, so I'd like to hear your take on that as well.
Well, we're wrong, Jay, what in your opinion?
I wasn't on the committee, in reality, but having said all that, the truth of the matter is, is that it's a mismanagement process. No matter how you cut the mustard, it's a mismanagement process, it should've been fixed. And, what bothers me more than anything else is we can't get the city to just give us an audit that we can actually look at and evaluate. We're somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars into a three-day party that people didn't come to. I'm trying to figure out why we're spending that kind of money when we're supposed to be physically responsible. One of the things that bothers me is we're spending a million dollars on a party, and we have fire stations that are falling apart. I don't know, that doesn't make sense to me.
Jay, you wanna jump in?
How about Al, we haven't heard from Al or Lee, you guys, what are your thoughts?
I just wanna tell you a quick moment. These are the kind of issues that are a perfect example of the distractions that we have and the kind of political hostility that people here are absolutely sick of. Let's talk about some real issues, we have people in the city on the streets-
Real issues? You think that management of the city is not a real issue?
It's of course mismanagement, but we don't have all the facts.
You took a million dollars and blew it on a 60th, I never got the whole point of a 60th anniversary in the first place.
We do not have all the facts at this point, so how are most of us on the stage-
Well, you're not gonna have a lot of the facts about a lot of the decisions that you gotta make, but you gotta make them.
How about, you know, we haven't heard at all from Lee or Al.
Okay, Al, why don't you tell us, what were your thoughts on the 60th anniversary?
You had a $200,000 miscalculation. They spent a ton of money on rock bands, and the city did not, the citizens didn't come in the attendance that was projected, okay? And, you had mismanagement, okay? But, there seems to be a perception here that you're supposed to have transparency on everything. We live in a litigious society, there are things you can say and things you can disclose and there are things you can't.
Wow, that's an interesting approach you got.
The city council has meetings, they're not all publicly held, they had 5 to 0 vote, they're not free to discuss these things because they could wind up with more litigation.
Lee, if you get elected, would you have another anniversary party?
How about a tisca? Bottom line is, we keep being a dead horse. We had a problem, bottom line, it was perilously done, irresponsible. Now, let's get to the point.
But, don't you believe in a certain level of accountability, or just, when there's an issue, you say, "There was a mistake made, let's just move on."
Well, it might, that might be-
We pay a million dollars to our friends and, you know, we call it a day.
Who has the bottom line? I mean, the council already voted 5-0s.
Let's change tracks again, and let's talk about sports fields. And, John, I know that you-
I think Alicia's gonna ask about it.
Alicia, that's right, Alicia's gonna talk about the sports fields.
Got a couple of kids in the old Costa Mesa area here, and with Fairview Park, and there's just so much contention over whether to put sports fields there, whether to put nature, you know, buildings there, what do you guys wanna do? Lee, what would you suggest with Fairview Park?
Well, you know, serving on that has been quite an eye-opener for me. I come from the opposite side of the park, I was raised on the Back Bay, and of course I have a whole different outlook. I have learned to revere Fairview Park, serving on that council, on that committee. I would like to see the park stay the way it is.
Okay, but here's my question. There is obviously a shortage and a need for sports fields, so if you don't put it there, where do you put the fields?
Well, we haven't, excuse me, we haven't done, I believe, a total study. I researched with the school board, I've talked to the school superintendent, I've looked, I've talked to the parks commission individually, and we have a lot of work to do. The fields are there, we need to come to the table, all of us, and it can be worked out.
I think the bigger issue are nighttime fields. Rita, I mean, is this something that is on your radar at all, about nighttime fields for-
We can get, excuse me, we can get, we can get lights on the fields. In walking the city for this campaign, I've had the opportunity to talk to quite a few residents. It's just a matter of talking about it and educating the people of Costa Mesa what they needed.
Well, you know what, I think this goes to the, it's kind of the issue of the council majority right now, that a lot of the people, I think this is why there's such, you know, vocalization in the community right now, put it nicely, because there is a strong feeling that there isn't a lot of talking, a lot of listening going on. And, I think that some of the ideas, the charter, some of these ideas aren't necessarily like horrible ideas that people like automatically, it's the approach. It's the idea that if you go to the council meeting, they're not listening to you, and I'm wondering maybe, you know, if someone else wants to speak to this, Chris?
You know, can I answer that, 'cause I'm up at the council dais?
Yes, you are.
I'm up there for four, five, six hours, I spend, you know, hours during the day, I spend every night this weekend, you know, I'm, listen, I'm a dad with three kids and a family trying to do the best that I can. And, I look at things maybe differently than some people, do I understand that? But, when people come to the microphone, I listen to everybody. The issue is, is that they think that listening means-
Agreed.
Listen, please, listen, this is really important. I'm elected to use my best judgment, and that's what I do, my best judgment, and I listen to people. And, if it makes a change, we make a change, but because we don't do what somebody says if it's out of our best judgment, that's why we're putting our best-
But, I think, I think the problem people have is that there's very, like, the recent negotiations with, you know, the city employees, they felt, it seems, that there was a nice negotiation going on, a compromise, but that was one of the first times I've heard that come out of this council, that there felt like there were people who were listening to each other. And, I think that maybe a different way of speaking to people or something needs to happen for people to feel like they're actually being listened to, taking some ideas from different sides of things, doesn't seem to be happening. Do, Tony, do you have an idea of how, like, you know, you work with different parts of the city?
With all due respect to Mayor Righimer, in politics, perception is reality, and whether or not he is in fact listening to people or not, that's the perception, and it's gonna drive public opinion. And, because of that, you're unable to build consensus and do these, so many needs that the community has, such as homelessness.
Right.
You can't, you know, we have a five-member council, we don't have a three-member council, this isn't the US House of Representatives.
So, how do you get people to feel like they are being listened to? What do you do?
Well, I personally feel immediately we need to get rid of the public comments policy and revert back to the old public comments policy, whether or not-
Absolutely, absolutely.
I understand there's some justification for, other cities have similar things, but clearly people feel like they're not being heard. A city council has both an executive, legislative, and judicial function. I think what's missing is that judicial function, or at least people feel that it's missing. And, I'd like to see that brought back.
You know, John, you wanted to jump in here for a minute-
We were gonna talk about the public-
We have it, yes.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about the public comments later, but since you brought it up, you know, I just kinda wanna see, how do the other folks feel? Would you guys switch back to the old comment system? For those of you who don't know, you know, in the old, in the old way, people could speak before the council meeting, and now they let 10 people chosen randomly speak, and then they trail the rest to the end of the meeting. And, so, what's the, what do you think, Chris? What's the best way to do this?
It's one of the keystones of my campaign platform, is to bring the public comments back at the beginning. The reason, my opinion's, but the reason why Jim got rid of it is because there was an hour and a half of people standing at the podium criticizing him. And, there has never been one city council member that has taught so much trash back to speakers. Jim has said stuff as people's walking away, you have the council majority texting, probably each other from the dais. If you went to In-N-Out and talked to people behind the counter, and they lived off to you like Jim does to people that speak, he'd be fired.
You know, I, I take a little bit of offense to that.
Okay, let's, let's- Oh, Jim, there, you can answer that.
This isn't the city council, they won't talk anytime they want an applause, this is like the city council chambers, you don't control the shots tonight, Jim.
So, let me tell you, let me tell you the dilemma of running a city council meeting. You have people that have scheduled, you know, residents that are coming in, say the Colleen group, that want to come in on their issue. And, we have, and we have, excuse me, and we have time for those people to come in. What was happening, and it's calmed down now that we've changed to this policy, but what was happening, we had same people, same people come up every single time, talk on every single issue, and drag out the meeting. The problem that was happening is we'd have 50 people waiting for an item that goes to 1:00 in the morning. Now, if you're a neighborhood, and they're talking about the Cadillac dealership over here, and you're waiting till 1:00 in the morning for someone to sing a song and everything else, you have to figure out how to manage it. All I was trying to look at is, how do we manage this, that-
What about the senior citizens that have to make an OCTA bus by midnight, and you're pushing the comments back after 1:00?
So, what we're, what we're trying to do is make sure that people can do it. I'm open to changing it if somebody wants to get together and figure out-
Change it back then, Joe, it's easy.
Now, hold on, hold on a second. Find the process that a meeting could get done before 2:00 in the morning for things that are scheduled, that's one thing.
It's called democracy first and then it gets locked.
Well, you know what, there's somebody who covers-
Now, hold on, hold on a second, James got a point here.
I have some experience on being on the council before, and the real simple matter is, is that we never had this kind of problem. Maybe we just didn't make controversial decisions, maybe that's where it was. Maybe we didn't do right.
He's absolutely right.
Maybe we didn't open up SROs, maybe we didn't do things like get our money out of the county before it went out, before it went bankrupt. Maybe we didn't get those kind of-
It's because Jim wasn't on a city council.
But, the truth is, we didn't have those problems, we didn't go all the time.
Let me respond to that. When I, we came through, we came through a recession, when I got on the council, we were $24 million in debt, $24 million in debt. Within six months, within six months, yes, we were, within six months, we turned that around, we put $14 million into reserves. Nothing was being spent on construction, we spent $40 million, my point is-
Wait, you have to back that up.
Listen, the point, listen, the point's very simple, the previous council-
Jim, you're throwing numbers around, and half the rest of the country thinks are going, "Wait a minute, $24 million in debt, hang on, where's that?"
Hold on, hold on.
I don't remember that stuff.
I forget that in the budget.
Let's talk about a quiet meeting, let's talk about November 2007.
Pretend you didn't say that.
November 2007, the employee contract was put on a consent agenda with 14 other items, and nobody said boo. You know what that consent agenda item was? That was to go ahead and change the pensions from a 50, a 50% pension, a 60% pension, to a 75% pension, and nobody said a word. You're absolutely correct. This council is taking extremely tough issues and working through them. And, when people are out there, I can understand they're upset and they're worried about it.
Well, speaking of tough issues, let's switch, let's switch again, and let's talk about the rehab home issue, because that, I know, is something that is on everybody's mind. And, you know, I, I followed this closely in Newport Beach. And, when I was writing columns about that, and it was going on a couple of years ago in Newport Beach, I was befuddled as to why Costa Mesa didn't jump in with Newport Beach and do something about it now, because didn't they, did they not think that if the rehab homes were not in Newport Beach, they weren't gonna move to Costa Mesa? So, what I'm seeing in Costa Mesa now is exactly what we had in Newport Beach a few So what I'm seeing in Costa Mesa now is exactly what we had in Newport Beach a few years ago, more than that. And so, aren't you feeling like you're a little late to the party here?
Yeah, no, I think, absolutely. Listen, first off, first off, Newport Beach spent $3.6 million on their law. It was found unconstitutional. It's not in effect. What they did have happen during that time is because one of the major operators didn't want to fight, they settled and they came up with an agreement, and they'd used that agreement. We didn't have any major operators. We had nothing to, to agree to. What the council has done since, and we just finished it up with the task force I put together, it was have an ordinance now going to the, up the planning commission. It'll come on the city council. It will be extremely controversial. People that are in group homes that have drug and alcohol problems have, have rights. And they, it has to do with the ADA, has to do with federal rights, and so it's very important that you handle that properly. The reason Newport Beach lost is because people from the public didn't, didn't understand that they were discriminating, that, that people on the council were discriminating, and so the judge just threw it out. We want to make sure we do the process that we're not discriminating, but that we have to say the characters of the neighborhoods are changing, and what can we do to do that?
Chris, did you want to say something about the rehab homes?
Yeah, so I've been meeting a lot of residents on the east side. And the numbers that they've come up with rehab homes in a city, their list that they've compiled is over 300. They think that the police department has another list that would add to those homes. Now, Jim did put together a task force, which is not an official task force.
Well, it's an official task force. It's not a committee.
It's, it's not a, well, it's not a committee under the Brown Act, so we don't know what they're talking about yet. Yes, the CEO Hatch has been there. The city attorney has been there, but you know the one person that should be there? The chief of police. And that's because Jim doesn't get along with the chief of police.
Wait, wait, wait.
Hold on, Jim, this is not a Jim...
I just had an hour to... Don't tell me I don't get along with the chief of police.
Take your time. You're suing the police department. What are you talking about?
Excuse me. Sir, sir. Sir. I am not suing the police department.
He's suing the police association, which is a police department, which is a city of Costa Mesa.
No, no, sir, sir.
I digress.
One at a time. We're going to get to the lawsuit.
We'll get to it. We'll get to it.
For example, no data has been, no data is being collected right now for the rehab homes and group homes. For example, arrests, nuisance calls. And by the way, in rehab homes detox centers, they're not allowed in R1 residential. It's against the law. Yet on Geyser, I'm being told that the greenhouse, that nice house that's over there, there is detox going on there. That's under Jim's watch. They came to Costa Mesa. Why? Because frankly, the real estate is cheaper. I met with a woman that lives on Eldon, and next to her house is a six-unit condo. Every six unit has six people in it, so she has 36 people recycling...
But we understand that these are problems. If you're elected, what are you going to do? Because there is the ADA issue.
The city of Orange put together an ordinance as far as, like, there has to be a, a distance between the two of them, like 150 feet. What we need is more teeth to ours. Now, you can't discriminate, but you certainly can't put the welcome mat out and say, come to Costa Mesa. By the way, there, no, anyways, I'm not going to get into that. But there's other issues regarding this, that this is the capital now for rehab homes. And it's plummeting your home values. So now you have the rights of ADA, that's true. But what about homeowners on the east side that now have crime going on in neighborhoods? By the way, two parolees per unit is allowed. And if it's six unit and below, or six persons and below, that means that no one can get involved. And also, there's one thing to talk about. We're talking about units in the city. You need to talk about bed count, because there is illegal...
Well, that's what Newport Beach did.
Yeah, I saw, you know, we haven't heard much from some of the folks in the middle. Rita, Al, where are you on rehab homes?
On rehab, it seems like this is one of the very few problems in the city where we seem to be on target and, and doing it right.
Okay.
We, we've got to make sure that we don't get into any more litigation. You've got to, you've got to do it slowly, and you've got to, and you've got to look at precedents. You have to see what they've done in other cities. You don't want, you definitely want to get these rehab homes out of there however you can, but you don't want multimillion-dollar lawsuits to haunt this city for years to come.
Rita, where are you?
I agree with Al. I think that the rehab situation is very complex. I don't think that you can easily solve it, and certainly with the fear of litigation, that's not good. I, it's because the state has certain needs, and all over the country, actually. My brother lives in Reno, and he's, he has one across the street from him. They don't tell you that it's coming in. You only find out when all the folks show up. So it's hard to, to, they don't have to apply for, for permits or anything, so it's very difficult to work with.
It's a complex issue. Has anybody on this panel taken any contributions from rehab homes?
No.
I returned it.
You returned it?
Yeah.
You did get a contribution and you returned it?
How much? $1,000? Yeah.
Well, let's change tracks once again.
Actually, I have one question.
Oh, Jay, do you want to say something about rehabs?
On the rehab houses, on the ordinance that's coming forward at the city? That was brought by Wendy Lees. And I don't, I, I think it's important, fact, there was two years ago that she brought that forward. So we need to keep clearly in mind whether this council has taken action in that area at all and why that might be true.
Well, but you know what? I, I'm sorry, Jay. I still feel that when Newport Beach was going through it and it was a hot topic there, Costa Mesa should have partnered with the city because they were stronger together than they are apart.
Barbara Santamendi signed on to this too, though.
Yeah, yeah, but that's, that's right next door.
You know, I met, meeting with the people of Take Back Our Neighborhood, they admitted that they didn't put the throttle soon enough, because now we're overwhelmed.
Yeah, you, you, definitely, the city is overwhelmed.
And by the way, part of the ordinance does have a 500-foot, it'll be between 500 and 700 feet. The limit, it'll be based on what the planning commission does, that the houses have to be separated.
Tony, do you want to close rehabs?
Sure, I can do that.
Let Lee...
Take, take your water. And then Tony will close.
All right. On this issue of rehab homes, I think our city is politically fractured on it. I've looked at it for a year. And I live on the east side, and we're heavily, lot of homeless. I, I believe that we have all the data that we need. When I say politically fractured, we got to find a way to come together. And I think if we come together, I think it will, we can get out of this. And you're right, we were careless. We didn't see it coming. There was a group in my neighborhood that stepped forward. I give them a lot of credit. I am not with that group. I, running for a campaign, I stepped back a little bit. But they had the right track. It makes no difference, Jay, who brought it to, to, to the city. We're all, this is the city of Costa Mesa. We have an issue. And I take issues sometimes about, well, I got credit, they got credit, they brought it, Orange did this. Stop it. We are politically fractured on it. We need to step together as a city and make this thing go.
Tony, do you have anything to say about the rehab issue?
Sure, I mean, obviously, it's a huge problem. One of the issues that it does cause, it's kind of not widely known, is it does add to our homeless population, which is a huge issue. But again, you don't want to fight a losing battle. I mean, we actually are joining with Newport Beach now. So, you know, the lawsuits have already taken up a huge portion of our budget. I, I just don't think it was something we wanted to get involved with initially. Now, let's take a look at it.
Well, let's change tracks once again. You know, one, one issue that is a very important issue in every campaign is public safety. And I started to look at some of your websites today, those of you that had websites. And Lee, you only had a few lines, and when I clicked on it, it wouldn't click through. Chris and Tony, you don't even mention it on your site, and I didn't see it.
That's not true. That might, I have a four-part plan. The fourth point is to improve public safety, and it includes adding retaining quality police officers.
I did not see that, so I stand corrected. Thank you. I looked at that today. John, let's talk about the public safety, because that is on everyone's mind with the police department.
Okay, yeah, and I think in a lot of ways, this is probably what people think is the most important issue facing the city right now, is the kind of the police staffing, the staffing levels, the kind of the tension between the police and the council and all that sort of stuff. So I want to just kind of start with the figure. Right, right now, the CMPD is what at? 108 personnel? Is that, is that about the right figure?
I don't, I don't know that that'd be true.
Okay, but I mean, I...
We're budgeted for 136.
Yeah, so and we're, and we're budgeted at 136, and right now, there's about 50 available for patrol when they're budgeted for about 65, 64.
The patrol, patrol's been at 50 for, 51 or two for years.
Okay.
That's what it's staffed up for.
Okay.
It's always been the same.
Okay, so, I mean, basically, I mean, the community feels like the staffing is too low and that too many people have left the department. You know, why, how did we get here? Why are we here? Is there a plan to increase police staffing? Or do you want to keep it where it is? I mean, what's the situation?
Well, I mean, first of all, I look at the question as the community is saying X, Y, or Z. I think because people that read the Daily Pilot, who write in back and forth to make the comments, aren't necessarily all the community. The issue in the community with police is, are you safe? Is there crime? That's the issue to look at.
Has the crime level gone up?
And the crime level dropped last year by 13%. This year, it's down 2%. So, no, it is.
Well, part one crimes are down, right? But there are other categories that are up?
Correct, correct. And so one of the things you have to look for in crime is crimes caused by who lives in your city and who you attract. We could triple the police force tomorrow, and crime's not going to change much. What it, what you have to look is what you attract. We've been working extremely hard on the motel issue. Because the motel issue, when you look at the, the low-level...
And we're going to get to the motel issue.
The breaking in, into cars and those kind of things are happening. Again, with the, the group homes, when they get kicked out of a group home, then to the motel, we have this problem. So the issue is to find out what attracts crime to your city and to work on that. I, I would talk to Chief Gazeey the other day for over an hour, and we went through the whole issue of our police department and, and how we're set up. Bottom line, in 2008, 2009, four years before, before I got here, the, the council in all cities, just about all cities across, across the country, were backing down the amount of police they had because the budget crunch was coming and happening. And so that went down. And now the cities are all coming back and doing it. We've put in a program to hire more officers, and we're hiring more officers on a ratio compared to any other city around than, than anybody else is doing. We just did five more out of the academy. We're picking quality officers. Our, our, one of our officers was number one in the class.
So, okay, to, to people, I'll get to you, Jay, but is your goal to get back to 136?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And do you have a timeline on that? Do you, do you, is that something you can pledge to do in the next...
Yeah, well, if you look at the numbers, I asked the chief again, the numbers, by the end of the year, we'll have about 24 hired, and then they'll go through the process. It takes four to six months to go through training, and you continue to bring them out. Remember, we're still retiring about a dozen a year, so we got to do a dozen a year just to keep up with the number, and then add to that. And what we said to them was, do what it takes. And we shifted the, the HR department to have separate staff just to help get through the backlog.
Hey, wait a minute, Jim, it sounds to me, with all due respect to you, Jay, that I just have one quick follow-up question, which is, you're saying we want to get back to 136.
Yes.
But at the same time, I've heard you in other forums, and I think it's one of the most interesting things that you talk about, which is crime, crime, crime is stemmed from a lot of different things.
Correct.
And it's not just police officers. But now you're saying that you want to go back to 136. So in a sense, are you kind of wanting to have it both ways? On one hand, you're talking about system change to try with root causes of what causes crime. But now that you're up for election, I hear you saying, well, we'll go right back to 136 because numbers equal safety. Is that really kind of a...
When, when, with the highest crime that we had in our city 10 years ago, we had 165. The crime has dropped through demographics and all sorts of reasons, and you don't necessarily need that. We had one time in this city with Newport Beach had nine helicopter pilots, two mechanics, and three helicopters. Those, you don't need those anymore. We're getting that service from Huntington Beach. Do we count those officers? No.
You think police are too toy happy? You think that police, you think that police are too toy happy? They like helicopters and cars?
I think helicopters are great on larger areas. They shouldn't be in one small city. They should be in larger areas. And so we do now have Huntington Beach and Newport and Costa Mesa together. We buy service from them. It costs us about 20% of the price.
Jay, did you want to jump in here?
Well, there's, there's three or four things involved here. First off, of those 108 officers, 16 are on the injured list because of all the overtime they have to work to try to keep services up. Secondarily, so we're not at 108. Secondarily, the council's own consultant said that the, we should have 135, 134. And that should be worked out about 140 to make sure we keep that number. Unfortunately, because of the hostile attitude that has been between the police and the council for the last four years that I know of, the problem is, is that we can't hire laterals. We hired five people from, basically from, from the police academy. And that's wonderful. We got five people. Two are gone. And the problem is, is that the faster they come on, those folks have to be trained up, and that's another 18 months to get them street functional for our city. So all those things are all well and good and said, but we get talked about all the different people that are applying. But it's interesting to note that very few people actually qualify because we're not getting the top quality people. We're getting somebody in the bottom end of the, of the group. So it's a very hard list to pick from.
I know. Let's, I know, Jim, let's, let's hear from the others. Just to be fair. Chris, where are you? Where are you on the police situation?
So regarding, just expanding off of what Jay was talking about laterals. Other, other cities, where, no one's coming here to lateral to us. They're, they're moving out. So you're not getting cadets with any experience. You're getting these new jacks on the street. And from start to finish, it's 18 months. Public safety, by the way, just, just expanding on it, I don't consider just police and fire. I also consider code enforcement in there as well. And getting back to the group homes real quick, we have one code enforcement officer who's taking care of all the complaints in the city. That, to me, that's happened under Jim's watch. Now, when you have a mayor who is suing the police association, if you were in law enforcement, would you come, come work here? I wouldn't.
I would.
I want to get to the... I want to get to the lawsuit, definitely. And I think, and I think we should talk about that. I do want to hear where the other candidates are, what their plan is to get to 136. It takes a long time to hire a single police officer, so how are you going to...
By the way, it's 12 months. It's not 18. It's six months in training and six months.
So how are you going to hire, maybe, you know, Tony, how are you going to hire 28 cops next year?
Next year.
Next year, I don't know about that, but, you know, the reality is, I actually have a, a couple of good friends, and this is the truth, that went to other departments because they were concerned about the hostility we have here in Costa Mesa. Again, it's one of those issues where perception is reality, regardless of whether or not it's really an issue. We need to recruit quality police officers, and the way we do that is to come together as a city and fix problems. And this is one of those issues.
Lee, would you increase the police department?
Lee, how would you do it? How would you, where are you going to find the money?
Well, you know, when this came about, I sat down with our city manager or CEO. And he actually was the person who wrote the new program after having advice of what the police department should do. So when Chief Gazeey came to us from Newport Beach, he was handed this plan to implement this plan. Immediately, it was, we were told we, we needed to run, we could run the department with 140. And they were asked, well, what would be the minimum? Well, 136. When that Gazeey came in, immediately, he lost five or six. So he came way down, and if he realized that 125, we were, we were in trouble. But those are flows that happen with their injuries, an academy class, if you...
Yes, but we're not looking for the history, Lee. I'm asking, if you get elected, would you increase the police department, and how would you do that?
Yes, I would increase it. It, it would take us, I believe, 18 months to get back to where we are.
All right.
What we, what we would need.
And Al, did you want to say something about this?
Yeah, I would increase it the way I said in public comments this past winter. By the way, over 10 years of public comments, my batting average is zero, so whatever. Setting that aside, what I would like to do is recruit laterals from out of state. Last winter, I said, we had a horrible winter. There's got to be people in Detroit and Boston and whatever decorated police officers who can hit the ground running, who would love to come to lovely Costa Mesa.
Interesting idea.
And nothing is happening, and, and my concern is that in 2015 or 2016, we'll be back up to full force with a bunch of rookies instead of experienced policemen.
Chris, did you want to...
That's a bad, that's a bad, that's a bad scene.
Thank you. Do you want to close this?
Just one thing, that we're talking about boots on the ground like patrol officers. K-9, narcotics, vice, all those departments have been depleted. And those, the people that fill those spots are the experienced officers. And that's why you, if you have your cars in burgled or your houses burgled, it's going to be months before a detective can get to it because he's so swamped.
Okay, so let's talk about the lawsuit a little bit. You know, maybe setting aside any potential merits. Why not just drop the thing and have everyone, you know, getting along again? I mean, just, why not extend the... This isn't, this isn't advocacy. I'm just asking, why not extend the olive branch and heal the relationship?
Okay, so it's, it's very simple. All we've asked for, if nothing happened and nothing was wrong, just come and speak about it under oath. The officers who were involved, the law firm that they, they hired, and the private investigator refused to do that. I would drop this thing tomorrow if the people would just come forward, say what they did, and we're over with it there. But I think what you'll find is what was really happening here. This law firm represented 130 police officer associations throughout the state. This law firm represented 130 police officer associations throughout the state. This law firm went ahead and did things in other cities like extortion to city councils to get the kind of votes they needed. The district attorneys, the district attorney did not get involved in this case because nothing there. The FBI is still involved in this case, not because there's nothing there. All we want is them to do it, and then for the last year and a half, they've done every trick in the book not to get in front of an oath just for a deposition. They would do the deposition, I'm saying right now, if they would do depositions, show they were clean, we're done, but they refused to do that.
How about just meeting with them privately? You guys sit down face to face, and they tell you what happened.
That would be fine also in there. Here's the issue. I mean, it's a very simple issue. You've had, you had a police association hire a private investigator who tried to set up an elected official for a DUI. It was a complete false rumor. You had during an election, the police, a police association hire a private investigator who put a tracking device on an elected official's car. There is, please, don't, don't, the district attorney has all the proof on that. That's not a problem. So, the fact of the matter is, if we're going to live in a society where you can just go ahead and put tracking devices on an elected official's car to get what you want, and why'd they do that, by the way? They didn't do it to use it for some campaign purposes. They do it to find, you know, your girlfriend, your boyfriend, whatever the issue is, and they use that to extort you to get what they want. That's a problem, and that's what this lawsuit's about.
Jay, did you want to say something?
Well, you know, this is all well and good, but it's all proof positive why there is such acrimony between the police department and the city council, and why we don't get lateral people.
It's not the police department, it's the association.
And why we don't get lateral people, and why we don't have people coming in droves to actually come to Costa Mesa to be hired. I believe that with a change in this council, what will happen is the hostile attitude that exists there will go away, and we'll be able to, through consensus and a lot of other steps, find ways to get lateral, already trained, ready to go, first-class officers to come back and work for Costa Mesa. A number of officers have gone to other cities, and they're perfectly happy to have gone there. Those guys can all, can probably be brought back in a lot of cases because they really want to be here, but they decide to leave for their own benefits.
Roberto, you want to jump in here for a minute?
I just have one last question to wait for Jim, because in some ways, it's, what you're arguing with your lawsuit against the police association, and as you said, the FBI is involved because part of what, kind of the undertow of that lawsuit, is that there's a system, and it is connected to the police department. There's a reason why cities are spending 65, 70% of their budgets on police and fire. Part of what it seems that you're arguing in your lawsuit is that this is a system that goes after, targets council members, and looks for more resources to come to them in employee contracts. So, it does seem, I mean, earlier you're saying that it's not police department, it's just a police association, but it does seem that you're targeting or you're, you're going after a system that is intertwined. I just, I just think it's fair for you to speak to that issue.
Okay, so, again, it is the police association who we negotiate the contract with. This law firm that represented 130 had this structure set up that we would have increases in pay based on neighboring cities, based on formulas of what's medium, and they defined what medium is.
Do you think there's a system to gin up? Do you think there's a system, there's a collusion between police departments and police unions to drive up police spending?
Not police departments, because the police department's part of the city. The associations do work together with their law firms. They're professional.
And the police chief has no idea what's going on, and nobody in the police department knows what's going on. It's completely out of there. The two are disconnected as way you want to have them.
What I'm saying is, the police department's the city. The association is what goes ahead and does their contract.
They're not intertwined in any way?
Listen, we have a lot of phenomenal police officers, and we have a lot of police officers that don't like what happened. You talk to them, they do not at all like what happened in the city. It tarnishes, but we're finding this is, we're not the only city this happened in. It's other places that it happened. Why did we see spiraling costs? Because their contracts were tied together in other cities, and automatic pay raises were given because of some city that...
This is actually one of the things that happened when you guys, when you basically first came onto the council, that kind of blew things up. One of the problems you have with the police association, it happened before you ever got elected, that you have, you started off with this anti-union kind of...
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, there's always been this kind of like anti-union attitude for you and the council majority. The problem with that for a lot of people in the community has been, that's, that's not local. That's, that's, that's an ideal, that you, that, you know, that's, that's higher office. We're talking about what's going on in our community, what's best for us. We don't care about what you think about, you know, unions in general, okay? And so, when you start going after unions, and it comes down to the police officers that are right in front of you, and that are in our neighborhoods, and our workers that you lay off half the city, you know, without even talking about it, these are people that we work with. These are people that we see every day. So, you're, you know, the ideal that comes out strikes a lot of people as, you don't care about the city. So, my question actually to all of you is, you know, why are you doing this? I mean, are you doing this for higher office? Are you doing this to show people that you're a strong, you know, Democrat, Republican, and you have these great ideals? Or what about this community are you worried about?
Okay, I, first of all, if I can answer the question. I've had opportunities for higher office. I've got three young kids at home. I'm not going to get on a plane, go to Sacramento, be gone all week. I'm going to be home. I'll finish this term. I will have done four years on the planning commission. If I now win, it'll be eight years in city council. That's all the, you know, public service that I'm going to do. It's not an idea of ideals. When I spoke, and what has actually hit was at the Mesa Verde event that they put on, and I stood there, and there was the police, union association, and the fire association in the back of the room, and I could have just kept my mouth shut, but the reality of it was, we had a quarter billion dollars of unfunded pension because of a political scheme that was done.
Everyone's dealing with unfunded pensions, though.
No, no, hold on. My point is, is that you have to do something about it, and what I said...
And everyone is doing something about it without firing the city.
What I said was, first of all, we didn't fire anybody, but what I said, what I said was, what I said was, we love our police and our fire. We do. These are great people. They save our babies. They're out there protecting us. But we got to admit, when a plan is unsustainable, that the 90% of pay at 50 years...
Do you understand, though, that people hear what you say and how you speak to them and get offended by the way you say it?
Well, I get you're offended by it, and I get some people are offended by it. I get that I'm not the best communicator.
I hear some of me that's...
Yo, I'm saying, listen, I'm not arguing with you. I'm not the best communicator, but I say what I'm going to do, and I do it.
Well, let's, let's...
I say it better than I would.
I am offended at a lot of stuff.
Roberto, let's, because I want to get to the next issue, but close this for me.
Well, just yes or no?
Should 65% of your budget, because here's the reality, the more that you lock yourself into police and fire spending, the less money you have for other things like code enforcement, even though code enforcement is in the police department.
No, it's separate. It works together.
I just, just quickly, is that a sustainable level in your mind to spend on police and fire, 65% of your budget?
Jay?
Well, it has been, employees have been the major portion of the city's budget from the start, you know, somewhere around 65 to 70% for all employees. And the reality is, is that there are parts that are not sustainable because they get ahead of the process, and you don't, you don't keep those things. We got, we found out about this problem because we had a terrible economy that crashed, and all of a sudden, people were having, were seeing the lack of extra cash to take care of those different processes. So, consequently, what we wound up by doing is we now have upon this...
But again, are you okay with that level of spending moving forward?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
It's, by the way, it is the first job of the city, is to provide security for the people who live there in the business world, and it's the father to it.
Very simple, 60 to 65% is sustainable, 19% on pension contributions and rising is not sustainable.
Not sustainable. But yet, that's your, well, go ahead.
I think maybe probably 80% would be a better percentage of our budget to serve our safety of our city.
I agree, somewhere between 65 and 80, but this, this idea that there are certain people who think that they can only work 20 or 25 years, retire in the prime of their life, and make $100,000 a year for another 40 or 50 years in their lifetime, I have a problem with that.
It's not sustainable.
It's not sustainable, and that's crippling the city. And so, when you say, "Are we affected?", we're affected that we've got a $226 million liability and climbing, so we are impacted. That's more than $2,000 per every man, woman, and child in our city. So, we are impacted that there are people who think they are special and they support this unsustainable system. Thank you.
We do have a huge problem, but it's only going to get bigger.
The CalPERS is demanding $10,000, $10 million right now this year. It'll go up to $2 million next year. In five years, it's going to be doubled in five years. That's the budget this year, the revenue came in $109 million, and $10 million of that has to go out for these unsustainable pension debt that CalPERS is demanding here right now. So, we have a problem with that. How do you retain police officers and so forth? I think Cal's suggestion is very good to get senior officers from other cities who are well-trained. I think that we have a wonderful city, and it's a very desirable city, but we're even have problems with how are we going to handle this unfunded pension liability? What do we do, raise taxes? What do we do, float a bond? We can't. So, that's the problem, is how do we sustain everything?
Okay, well, that's a good point. I mean, how are we going to pay down the unfunded pension liability? Chris, how would you do it?
You know, right now, all departments are skeletal. You could get rid of all of the city workers, and you'd still have an unfunded liability problem, all right, which is roughly 228. That's not going to go away. As the economy improves, hopefully, CalPERS will keep up their end of it, and CalPERS has had their partners as well. If you go to publicceo.com, they always have updates on what CalPERS is doing. CalPERS actually went against Jerry Brown in terms of their spiking. Jerry Brown said, "You need to get rid of almost 100 ways to spike your pension towards the end." They came back and gave 99 ways to do it. So, they were one of against him. The days of like the big fat pensions that are coming from public employees, that's gone. On Harvard Business Review this month, they have the days of like the unions. Right now, the biggest bulk of unions are in the public sector, not the private sector. Matter of fact, in the public sector, it's down 11.9. And I don't think in any good faith, or any associations, whether it's fire, police, or city associations, or county, are going to come to the negotiating table and say, "We want more." Matter of fact, I think it's the new era being ushered in, are public employees paying almost 100% of their pensions. Those days are kind of gone.
So, how does Costa Mesa pay the tab? What do we do?
Costa Mesa has to do what they're continuing to do and strap their belts tightly. There's no more upspiking the pension plans. We can't do it anymore, and if anyone says they have a silver bullet or a magic wand to cure this, they're lying.
Jim, do you have a silver bullet?
No, there is no silver bullet. Basically, it's an unsustainable plan. Cities in California will go bankrupt. When it goes bankrupt, the structure will change. Basically, CalPERS is a political organization. There's 13 members. Six of the members are either in unions or retirees, and they want the plan. The other seven are elected officials that get appointed. Most of them, actually, all of them right now are from the Democrat Party, which is backed up by labor unions. They cannot, the system is structured such that you can't even change the people on it because they'll get knocked out by their own groups. So, the plan is unsustainable. You will have bankruptcies like there was in Detroit. Our city will be fine. We keep on watching. Our budget will be okay, but as those other cities go bankrupt, CalPERS will then, because you will have a situation where retirees do not get their check in these cities, and we can't have that happen. My biggest thing is to make sure that we have a plan to make sure we can stay in the system as long as we need to until the state fixes it, but there's clearly no way we can fix it. But what we can do is make sure we don't have additional employees that we may or may not need to be on plans that are unsustainable.
Jay and Tony, how would you pay down the unfunded pension liability?
Well, in a couple of things, because we've had a lot of other stuff. One, we've already had a pension committee that has talked about ways to do that, reducing the liability by paying it down, keeping, continuing to make their payments, to increase the amount of money we pay, and also to take advantage of discounting that is done by one-time payout. But one of the things we keep on talking about is, is that I have to agree that it's absolutely imperative that we increase the amount of employee participation in their payment on theirs to help the future liability. But people, when we get this whole comment about PERS, PERS just posted an 18% growth in its number as opposed to 7.5. Last year was 14% as opposed to 7.5. Part of the unfunded liability has disappeared already simply because of those numbers. And one of the final ways to get rid of the liability over time, it's not going to happen overnight, and I don't think so, but is to make a new offer to people and say, "Instead of taking your money for your entire actuarial time, get a one-time payout that is somewhat reduced from that, and have that in the contract. It's an option. They choose whether they do it or they don't do it. It's not a mandatory, and every dime beyond whatever amount of money they get to their full actuarial differential, every dime comes directly off the unfunded liability."
Okay, wait, just one second, because I asked Tony here. Tony, what would you do to pay down the pension liability?
Sure, I mean, the solution is fairly simple. I mean, first, employees need to contribute all of their share to their pension, and they need to contribute more of their share to their pension. It should look more like the federal plan. Local employees, you know, I am a federal employee. I have great benefits. I don't complain about it. That's what it should look like. But there is something that I want to be careful of. I understand the realities in that new employees are going to have to take a bigger hit, but constantly, my generation is being forced to pay for the indulgence of previous generations. No offense meant to that. We need to be really careful when we're hitting new employees so hard and not distributing it evenly. I do think that all employees should contribute more to their pensions.
Let me just make a point on...
And then we'll get back to Lee.
Yeah, the way the state is structured, that even if our employees said, "We want to pay more towards our pension over that 9% in there," it's virtually impossible because the law stops them from doing that. We have a situation that, which you're talking about saying, "Change the plan." There's a law in place, not even a law, it's called the California rule, which says, "Once you've given a pension plan, you're a six-month employee, you can never change the plan, ever, going forward for the next 29 years." That's a major problem, that one of the few things our state has that. So, let's talk about employees paying. How are you going to have a police officer pay? Let's say they pay their whole pension. It's 58% of their pay. They can't afford it. And if you want to attract officers, you've got to have some kind of balance in saying they're paying 10, 12%. If we all could afford to save 25%, put in a pension, we would. People can't afford that. So, we got to find some balance in it, knowing that they're not allowed to change the formula, and they can't afford to pay 25% of their pay towards a pension.
Lee, why don't you wrap us up here?
Well, I think there's, for me, there's four ways that we're going to be able to retire this, and I mean, it's just a reality. One is to raise taxes. The other is, I just read an article today that was sent to me, where the city of Watsonville raised their city tax to 9% to meet the pension. The other thing is, we go to Sacramento and see if they would work with the cities and bring everything down. We know how far that's going to go. Okay? And the last two, I think, are bond or property taxes. Costa Mesa is, within five years, we're going to feel it.
Well, let's change, let's change tracks.
Can I make one point?
Quickly.
Last point, and we're going to try to move on to some social issues.
I think it's important, is that pension liability is, it's more important to restore the lost rainy day reserves, because that's the money we have available to pay CalPERS when the bill goes up. That's the money we need to meet ongoing obligations, and that's the highest priority. And Mr. Riggen, he feels that we're an affluent city, and I agree, but this next recession could be another leg of the last one. We need to, it's a high priority to have more money in the bank and not in CalPERS' hands, and in the meantime, the employees have to, the current employees, not the future hires, the current employees need to kick in more, and that's all I can say.
Let's change tracks for a minute. Another issue that is very on everybody's mind is the homeless issue here in the city. And I know that Alicia, you had, you had some questions about the Civic Center Park.
Oh, right. The neighbors around Civic Center Park didn't want the homeless shelter there, permanent housing for homeless, supportive housing where they would have had some care on-site, which they're fighting with right now in Laguna. I mean, it's a difficult thing to get anywhere. But in the city, we do have our homeless on the streets. We have a few homeless food banks and such. What do we do? I mean, can we provide them a place that they can get some care? Do, is it just attracting more homeless to our city?
Civic Center Park locations out, is there another option? Where can we build supportive housing? Or shouldn't we be doing it at all?
Yeah, Tony, you have a lot on your website about that.
Civic Center Park was a bad location to begin with. It wasn't even zoned correctly. It was an impossible location, and the city just plain messed up on that issue. I'm not necessarily blaming the city council, but the city messed up on that issue. But Mercy House submitted 10 other locations that are very viable. Where those locations are, I don't know because they haven't been released, but there are plenty of locations in the city where you can build supportive housing because there are different models. There's four different models of which you can build off of, but it's not...
The biggest problem's always going to be the buy-in from the residents, the neighbors. So, how do you, how do you...
When you don't, you don't put it in an area where there's, it's surrounded by residential neighborhoods. I actually live right next to Civic Center Park. I live in Monticello, so, you know, I was at the meeting to support the plan if it was going to happen, but it was a struggle for me. But the other problem with that is it wasn't near any grocery stores or any other services that are essential to supportive housing. There are plenty of locations that are not surrounded by residential neighborhoods that you can build in. One of the locations I've heard is over by Trader Joe's, where, you know, it's surrounded by an industrial yard, there's, there's grocery stores, you know, there are, there are other locations.
Well, many of the homeless live in the motels, which, you know, you're trying to clean up now. So if you get rid of the motels where the people live, where do you put them?
Is that for me?
One of the, one of the criteria that has been done before very successfully is to actually develop SROs, and those are replacing some of those motels, single-room occupants, single-resident occupants. And they also have what are called single-family, small-family occupancy facilities. They have rules, they have potential for treatment, they have a variety of, of outreach to other social services. And we have successfully made those before in the past. We've made the model for the county back between nineteen ninety-four and nineteen ninety-two, as a matter of fact. And the bottom line is, is it helps give a home, a physical home, to a homeless individual who wants that. And that's one of the things we have not doing, we're not providing. In fact, we're taking away, actively taking away, the housing available for homeless people. And that becomes a travesty. I'm sorry. We need to make sure that we take steps, and we can do it. We've done it before, and I don't understand why the city can't do it now.
Wait, wait, just when you were talking about subtracting housing problems, are you talking about the motels?
Yeah.
I'm talking about motels, we're almost talking, taking up motels and converting a motel to an SRO. Unlike converting a motel that we've been told are run by slum lords, and I think I want to become a slum lord, I think under this one, and convert a motel of two-hundred-and-thirty-four units to two-hundred-and-thirty-six high-rise luxury apartments overlooking the golf course. I think I want to be a slum lord if I get that.
Lee, did you want to jump in here?
Since you're saying that we've had these, and then you know, where are these places?
Say it again.
You said that we had this, that we were a model for Orange County. Where were these places?
The, the two of them are over on Newport Boulevard, and the third one, which is the senior SRO, is on Newport Boulevard too. So when you've been walking around, huh?
With these hotels?
They're seniors.
They're, they're motels that were converted into SROs, and two of them...
Are, are these motels we're currently having problems with?
No. Haven't had a call on any of them that I know of.
The reality of the situation is, it's extremely complicated. You can't narrow down the homeless to a single group. I've had an opportunity for the last two years to work on the Costa Mesa street team. So you need various housing models. It's not one housing model. But the problem is, there seems to be a huge difference in philosophy. I've often heard the opinion that we need to improve the quality of our residents. To me, this is an extremely dangerous way of thinking, because I've met so many residents on the Costa Mesa streets that went to Estancia High School, Costa Mesa High School. These are our people, and these are issues that we need to deal with as a community. We can't do what other cities have done and pawn the problem off on our neighbors. Until we change that and we build public opinion for that, we're not going to solve the problem.
Chris, did you have anything you wanted to say about the homeless issue?
Yeah, in San Jose, what they're, because they have a homeless problem there, what they're doing is taking hotels. Hotels have an economic life of X amount of years, where at some point, they're three to four stars, and they start to go down, and there's nicer hotels that come aboard. There's no reason why hotels can't pivot to accommodate different sorts of people. And whether Jim's intentions were to redevelop the hotels and clean them up because they've had a lot of calls for police or fire, or it's to throw them out so they can redevelop it for his developer friends, we don't know that for a fact. But as Tony was saying earlier, you know, a homeless person's not always someone who's pushing a basket with a bunch of cans on it. There is a person in the hotels who has a ninety-year-old attorney, and its families. So what you're seeing is the demographic, the composition of homeless people, it's changing. It's not just always a single person. It could be a whole family's displaced. So where do they go? And when you have this anti-hotel stance that Jim and, and the planning commission has taken towards him by redoing conditional use permits and whatnot, it's not yet one more message that Jim sets out to people. Not only has Jim gone after the police department, now he's going after hotels that provide for housing for homeless people.
We're going to go, just a quick response from Al, and Jim, you can, you know, answer that, and then Roberto.
I mean, there's all kinds of wonderful things you can do, but where's all the money going to come to do all of this? I, I just, I'm a little perplexed as to where our responsibility is. To me, it seems that until somebody comes up with a sure cure to mental illness, we're going to have the homeless with us for a long, long time. It's not always me. I lived in Costa, I lived in Santa Monica for twenty years, and, and I lived in LA, and we don't have a homeless problem compared to what they've had, and what they still have.
All right, so Jim and Tony.
Yeah, so first of all, there's a balance in here. In the city of Costa Mesa, because of the programs they have for free food, we have, we attract a lot of people to our city. The people in Costa Mesa are, are very giving, they care a lot, they'll take their fair share. The model that we're looking at in our city is to say, all the cities have to take their fair share, because if you just go start feeding people and taking care of everybody, you end up like Santa Monica, where they just line up and come to your city. So because we've gone to that model, Tustin's doing that model now, Fullerton's doing that model, Santa Ana's looking at that model to say, we'll take care of our own, and maybe a little bit more, but they have to have some connection to the city. Went to school there, worked there, lived there for a certain amount of time. We're pretty open on that. With regards to the motel situation, what we really had there was, we have a lot of problems in some of these motels. One of them in particular, five-hundred-and-fifty calls for service. The issue is that we're having literally slum lords hiding behind the homeless, not the homeless, but the underhoused, I would call them. And to go into someone's room, you know, they knock on the door, we go in, there's five people in a hundred-and-eighty square feet, which they're charging eighteen-hundred dollars a month for. That's not affordable housing. What that is, is making money on the backs of these poor people. And what we said was, is that if you're homeless and you have this issue, you can stay there for thirty days. Yes, you may have to move someplace to another place after, but you're paying an outrageous amount of money, and you need to work on getting your life fixed. Some of these people can, some can't, we understand that. But if we're just going to be a magnet, it's not going to solve the problem. But what we don't want to do is allow these, these property owners to rip off poor people and call it affordable housing.
All right, Tony.
Sure, just to address a couple of those issues. First of all, the, the money issue. The money's there because, one, all of these housing programs are led by nonprofit organizations. There's also federal and state money that are already, that's already designated for many of these programs, so that the money is not an issue. The other issue brought up in terms of, you know, feeding in the parks, that was definitely an issue. But there's a difference there. That's a charity model. What's being done in Costa Mesa now is a community development model, and that's what supportive housing is, that's what transitional housing is, that's what rapid rehousing is. The charity model is, is long past. That's not what we're dealing with anymore. We're working on getting people out of homelessness and making their lives better. That's, those are the programs we're talking about. We're not talking about homeless shelters.
Correct.
Yes, Lee, did you want to say something, and then we're going to change...
I want to address Tony. Tony, you'd say the money is there. Where is this money?
Well, as far as the...
If, if, if there is money, it hasn't come forward.
The supportive housing project was already fully funded. It was ready to go.
Yeah, the money's there, she's like, where are you going to put it?
But they, the city council, you know, dropped a ball on that one, unfortunately, it hasn't gone anywhere.
Let's go to medical.
I, I would like to find out where that project went.
Okay.
We're starting to get towards the end of our program, and I always ask a yes/no question, and I have a couple. So, medical marijuana, yes or no?
Jay?
Yes.
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 No.
No.
If it's not medical, no.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay. Now, there was, I've recently written about the, the ways of expression in Costa Mesa during this election, which has been kind of strange. Messages on toilet seats, yes or no?
Yes. I wouldn't do it.
No.
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 It's not classy.
Chris?
Yeah.
Because, buddy, we, we had this debate in my house, and my husband thought that this was an okay thing. I think as a woman, I'm offended by it. It may be a gender thing. Rita, did you want to say something about the toilets?
Yes, there was a problem. There was no paper. The job's not done till the paperwork is done.
Roberto, I know that you wanted to jump in here.
Overdeveloped!
You know, we discussed that at the beginning. Roberto, you had, you wanted to jump in here.
Sure, I guess I, you know, I guess I just kind of, as a way to kind of maybe wrap up, or a kind of, a lot of this chatter has kind of gone in this direction. I guess I'd start off with Jim and maybe ask the rest of the council, or the rest of the council candidates to kind of talk about what's happened over the last four years. You know, when you came in, my arguments, led a council implementing a very aggressive plan to take the budget in a different direction. Since then, there have been millions of dollars in lawsuits, have been locked up in the courts, extremely tense, council meetings, police officers leaving. I guess my question is, recently, we just reported that you finally reached a new contract with that general employees group. When I look at it, frankly, I look at it and I say, well, you got street sweeping out of that. And I guess my question is, was all that four years worth being able to privatize street sweeping? And where do you go from here in the next four years? And again, and I'd like, you know, in a sense, let everybody else answer that question as well.
I, I think in fairness, the press only talk about kind of like the numbers. The reality of it is, we redlined the whole contract. It's eighty, ninety pages. And there were all sorts of clauses in the contract where the contract ran the city. And the principle that the council said was, we want the management, we want the chief of police, we want the fire chief to run the city and not have a contract run the city. So with the fire department, we got rid of minimum manning. They agreed to that. That was put aside. We made sure nobody was laid off. We bought them brand-new trucks. We've done a lot of things to make their jobs better. We're now looking at two new fire stations. With the miscellaneous employees, we really had to come to grips with what some of our pay ranges were. Now, we didn't want to really affect people that had house payments and had issues over there, so quite frankly, we did say to new employees, when we have two thousand applications